Welcome to a meeting of your Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Representing District One, Harry Cohen. Representing District Two, Ken Hagan. Representing District Three, Gwen Myers. Representing District Four, Michael Owen. Representing District Five, Donna Cameron Sapata. Representing District Six, Pat Kemp. Representing District Seven, Joshua Rostol. The county administrator is Bonnie Wise. The county attorney is Christine Beck. Time is set aside at the beginning of each meeting for citizens to speak on any issue. So we have time for everyone. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to three minutes. Today's meeting is brought to you with closed captioning by Hillsborough Television.
Good morning. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, a regularly scheduled board meeting of the Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners. Would everyone please rise for the pledge and invocation given by our chaplain, Commissioner Cameron Sapata?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we come before you this morning. We thank you for this day. We thank you for your great love and your mercy on all of us. And we just ask you for your protection over all the men and women that are serving in the military. We pray for our veterans. And we pray this special month here for human trafficking. But every day, we pray for those that have been trafficked. We pray for the victims of human trafficking, that they will come out of the darkness, the evil darkness, and into the light of freedom. And we pray for all those that are helping to bring them out of that darkness, that you lead them and guide them, that will be perfectly, perfectly free in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. This morning, we have three special accommodations to present, and the first two will be presented by Commissioner Cameron Sapata.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Dr. Carrie Nero and Ellsworth Williams from Veterans Counseling Veterans please join me at the podium? Good morning and welcome. I'm honored to present this commendation to an amazing person who has served our nation, state, and region. Dr. Carrie Nero has provided medical care, life-enhancing counseling, and great comfort to countless people, to name just a few of her achievements. She served as a, in the United States Army with the Florida Department of Health and is on the Board of Veterans Counseling Veterans. She once told an interviewer, "Everyone else was looking for the party, and I was trying to find the university." And find the university she did several times, leading to what can best be described as not one, but two historic careers, as you're about to learn. The commendation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Carrie Nero for her extraordinary life of service to the nation's military, public health, and veterans. A member of the Veterans Counseling Veterans Board of Directors, Ms. Nero is a testament to the power of education utilizing her bachelor's degree in counseling and behavioral health, a master's degree in nursing, and a doctorate in higher education from the University of South Florida to better lives. In 1975, she fulfilled a childhood dream by joining the United States Army, the start of two careers that would parallel each other. A surgical nurse, she became chief nurse and deputy commander of the Third Medical Command, U.S. Army Reserve. The Third Medical Command serves as the single enabler, deployable medical command headquarters, providing operational and medical support during Operation Enduring Freedom, Operation Iraqi Freedom, U.S. Military Operations in Afghanistan, and support to the United States Central Area of Operations and across the globe. In civilian life while working for the Florida Department of Health in Pinellas County, she was the state of Florida's first director of a minority health office, working tirelessly to address medical issues in the African-American community and beyond. In 2002, this humble public servant was promoted to the rank of Brigadier General, becoming the first African-American nurse in the United States Army Reserves to achieve this honor, a phenomenal and historic achievement. United States Army retired for her dedication and significant achievements as a trailblazer who has uplifted countless lives, awarded this 17th Day of January 2024." Brigadier General Nero, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I would like if you would, really would like for you to say some words. We'd love that.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all. Good morning. And to the Board of County Commissioners here in Hillsborough County, to especially Commissioner Dr. Capela, I am honored to humbly accept this award, this recognition. Working in public health, community health, and in the military has been a rewarding life for me. And as I stand here this morning, I'm especially honored because Tampa is my home. I was born in Tampa, Florida, on Beach Street. And in my neighborhood and in my home, we had educators, engineers, and we also had military veterans who instilled in me a spirit of volunteerism, a spirit of giving back to our community. I can recall briefly, and I'll be very brief with this, that in my neighborhood, we would mow lawns, we would help the neighbors repair, and we looked at our community with pride. And I think back in my mind, an initiative that we did about five years ago in South Forest Springs community, where we actually helped with homes, we helped with transportation, and veterans and their families with well checks. This is a part of what we do. And being here this morning with Veterans Counseling Veterans and a board member, I am more honored to serve the Hillsborough County veterans population. And with that, we have a mission. And our mission is focused on the entire veterans community. And what we are focusing on right now is about five different programs that will help us help veterans and their families. One of them is women veterans with mental health. A second is working with suicide. Veterans, we know that today about 20, according to our data, die each day from suicide. And we're trying to prevent that. And lastly, we're looking at military sexual trauma. And with military sexual assault, we have put forth a team effort. And in that effort, we look at teaching, we look at educating, we look at engaging the family, and we look at mentoring. And this is a part of a big initiative for this year. I'd like to invite you, if you will, join us on April 5th through the 7th to a workshop we're having on military sexual trauma and assault, working with family members, especially who have been impacted with the assault that mentally goes on in the home that we are not aware of often. But on April 5th through 7th at University of South Florida, we're having our third annual military sexual assault workshop. Please join us, and I thank you ever so much for this recognition and award today. Thanks again.
Mr. Alge, would you like to say a few words as well?
I was supposed to say something, but really, if I can have General Nero's son come up and wave my, and let him talk, I want you to say just a couple of words. I only got a couple, two minutes, so you got two minutes. But this, this award is yours also, so I appreciate that.
I'm gonna keep it simple. Cool. All I want to say is, Mama, yeah, come here. All that glaze you did, we just proud of you. We love you. I'm saying you, it's too much to even, the, 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 the list goes on and on and on. I, as your son, just want to keep it simple. I love you, and I'm, I'm, I'm so happy, you know what I'm saying? I can't, I can't even say it.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
I love you.
We want to, anyone else want to please take a photo of this?
I just wanted to say thank you for your service, especially in South Forest Springs, because I know South Forest Springs is a community that really is worthy, is needing your help. So thank you so much.
Come on in the picture. Come on, we have a few minutes. Just like a fly.
join me at the podium?
Good morning and welcome. Thank you for joining us. Hillsborough County continues to be a steadfast leader in its efforts to combat and win the war against human trafficking. This is an issue I'm deeply passionate about, both as a county commissioner and a member of the County Commission on Human Trafficking. This organization has made tremendous strides since it was established by the Board of County Commissioners just a few years ago. And it's my honor to present this proclamation to Mr. Klug, declaring January 2024 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month. It reads, "Whereas, human trafficking is a crime that occurs throughout the United States and is prevalent in the state of Florida and local communities. And whereas, according to the National Human Trafficking Resource Center, Florida ranks third in the nation for the number of tip calls to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. Whereas, human trafficking, often referred to as modern-day slavery, exploits vulnerable people for forced labor, domestic servitude, or commercial sex operations by use of force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, the Florida Statewide Council on Human Trafficking was created to enhance the development and coordination of state and local law enforcement and social services responses to fight all forms of human trafficking and to support victims. And whereas, dedicated to promoting and raising public awareness of human trafficking, the Board of County Commissioners created the Hillsborough County Commission on Human Trafficking to support educational opportunities to recognize the indicators of human trafficking and improved outcomes for victims and service providers through data collection, sharing, and analysis. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby declare January 2024 as Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Hillsborough County and encourages all residents and visitors to be vigilant in identifying and reporting human trafficking to send a strong message that Florida will not tolerate any form of slavery, awarded this 17th Day of January 2024." Thank you, Mr. Klug, for all that you and everyone on the commission is doing. Would you like to say a few words?
Yeah, just a few words. First of all, I just want to thank the B O C C for creating this commission. And they saw the foresight back in 2019 for the need of this. This is an ongoing, continuing effort. It's not just one month. I know the president declared this back in 2010 as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in January, but it goes on throughout the year. Our commission, it made up of 20 different members, broad scope of the community. We have the chief judge of the 13 judicial circuit, the state attorney, the public defender. We have survivors of human trafficking on our committee. And so this is something that we look out throughout the year, ways we can combat this scourge, this crime, and how can we get in this. And so a big part of this is human awareness, creating awareness and education to the public. This is something that exists only in our community, committee-wide, but also worldwide. There's millions of people affected by this. It's not just sex trafficking. There's workers, indentured servants, migrant workers, et cetera. This is something we have to be continuously vigilant about. If you see something, report it. And this is, what we do is create awareness and education, and we struggle to fight this every day. And I appreciate everyone here, your support for this. I appreciate the committee, and especially the B O C C for creating this commission. Thank you very much. Thanks.
We'd like to, we'd like to take a photo now of anyone here from the Commission on Human Trafficking.
We have a number of members here.
For the photo, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Cameron Sapata. And a final commendation will be presented by Commissioner Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would Tanya Lewis, President of Children with a Vision Incorporated, please join me Good morning and welcome. It is my honor to present this commendation to a community leader who I consider to be a true hero to all women, or as I would like to call her, my shero. Tanya Lewis has faced tremendous challenge in her life, and she has used her strength and resources to create Children with a Vision, a nonprofit organization that serves the needs of our county's children. Today, she faces another challenge. In October of 2023, Ms. Lewis received a devastating diagnosis, the large cell nuoendocrine carcinoma, I hope I got it right, of the selv, selvic, also known as LCNEC. Not surprisingly, Ms. Lewis is confronted with this obstacle with grace and dignity. January is cervical cancer awareness month, and making it even more important for us to recognize the strength, the courage, and achievement of Tanya Lewis. The commendation reads, "The Hillsborough County Board of County Commissioners is pleased to recognize Tanya Lewis for her unwavering commitment as a community and children's rights advocate, and her courage in facing life's challenges." There is one word that best describes who Tanya Lewis is. That word is shero. Throughout her childhood and teens, she experienced abuse, but instead of succumbing to the hardships she faced, she sermoned her strength to become a victor to her circumstances, not a victim. Over 30 years ago, she founded Children with a Vision, a far-reaching and multifaceted nonprofit organization whose program and sponsored events help children in need. Her hard work and efforts has been honored by the Hillsborough County Sheriff's Office and other notable public and private organizations. Ms. Lewis is now facing her ultimate challenge, a rare and aggressive form of cancer, also known as LCNEC, a rare vibrant of the cervical cancer. LCNEC affects 70 women worldwide as January is cervical cancer awareness month. Ms. Lewis faces her obstacles as a hero to her community and serves courage for women who are diagnosed with this horrible disease. The Board of County Commissioners of Hillsborough County, Florida does hereby commend Tanya Lewis for her courage, perseverance, and dedication to her community, and wishes her good health in her latest challenge awarded this 17th Day of January 2024. Ms. Lewis and my friend Tanya, please share a few words. It's okay, because God has you, and it's about faith, and you standing on faith, so it's okay. And here's, before you say a few words, but this is the proclamation. You want me to hold it while you say a few words? Go ahead.
Good morning. Just want to say thank you to, first, giving honor to God first, that I'm standing here. Second, I want to thank the Hillsborough County Commissioners for this nomination. And then I want to thank a host of people, my care team, that has been there tremendously for me every day. I couldn't do it without them. My community, my pastor that's here today, and the tire staff of Moffitt Cancer Center who's giving me the ultimate care that I can ever think about selfishly. It's a team of doctors for this rare cancer that I have. But I say again, I couldn't do it without the support and the love of the people who loving on me. I'm used to always doing stuff for everybody else, and I'm not used to being on this side receiving the help. But I'm grateful, as I look into the audience, there's a, there's a village. I always said it was a village to take care of the children, but it's truly a village for myself. The Tampa Police Department, the Sheriff Department, a lot of government officials, it's so many people. Ms. Lisa, Ms. Elizabeth, thank you. Pastor Roundtree, thank you. And the entire church of New Mount Zion, who's been praying for me. T.A. Mahoney, thank you. I don't want to leave out nobody's name, but I just say thank you to everybody who's standing behind me, because having cancer, I walk in that door Moffitt, and I see so many people that don't have the team and the love that I have. And I'm constantly praying for them and forgetting about myself. And I'm always advocating, even in Moffitt, I can't even sit down, even think about me, because I'm always thinking about everybody else. But that's what God has us to do. Again, I stand before you, and I just give all the honor to God for me standing here today, being a blessing over all the adversities that I ever overcome. If God can bring me to it, he can bring me through it. So thank you.
You summed it up best. If God can bring you through this, and he will, because you have the faith, and that's what it's all about today. If you have the faith in him, he will take care of you. So now we'll join in back. Come on up, Pastor, Pastor Roundtree, and other than the team, come on up so we can take a picture. Oh, Sean, come on in, John, this is, come on. And I'd just say for the women out there, you know, let's go be, get our checked up as we should, and sometime early detection pays great dividends in our personal lives. Come on, we're going to the bathroom. Ms. Elizabeth?
It's okay to tighten up. It's okay, we, you're okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Myers. Bonnie, want to review the changes to the agenda?
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. We have one item that has been removed from consent for highlighting or commendation or announcement by Commissioner Owen. It's item A14. This is to approve a locally funded agreement between Hillsborough County and the Florida Department of Transportation to design and construct a westbound left-turn lane for Boyett Road at the U.S. 301 signalized intersection. We have one item that has been removed from consent for discussion or questions by Commissioner Kemp. This is item A7. This is to schedule and direct the county attorney's office to advertise a public hearing, to consider an ordinance amending the Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance to remove portions relating to affordable housing relief from impact fees. We have several items for time certain. The first one is at 10:00 a.m., item D1. This is to hold a second public hearing to consider adoption of an ordinance providing for a temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of any public or private elementary, middle, or secondary school. Item 1015 is Commissioner Hagan's item, item F3. This is to discuss the reauthorization of the community investment tax in 2024. Item E1 at 10:30 is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, Executive Director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their semi-annual activity report. 11:45 is the recess for lunch. Those are the changes to the agenda.
Motion, approve the changes?
Move for approval.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote. What changes the agenda?
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, we're going to the public comment portion of the agenda. The board welcomes comments from citizens about any issue or concern. Your opinions are valued in terms of providing valuable input to board members. However, it is requested at the same time when you address the board that comments are not directed personally against a commission or a staff member, but rather the issues. We've set aside 45 minutes for public comment this morning. The chair will call speakers by name in the order in which the requests to speak have been received. When addressing the board, please state your name and speak clearly into the microphone. Each person will be given three minutes. First three speakers this morning, David Coleman, followed by Brooke Ward, and then Isabella Sodariaga, I think. Mr. Coleman. If Mr. Coleman's not here, Brooke Ward, then Isabella, and then Peter Horseman. Good morning.
Good morning and Happy New Year, everybody. As you know, my name's Brooke Ward. I'm the Senior Florida Organizer with Food and Water Watch, and we have over 5,500 members here in Hillsborough County. And I'm here today on item F2. We had planned this morning to have a discussion on an affordable energy workshop. We're disappointed that the commission has delayed that vote and instead is talking about an unsustainable and dangerous project like carbon capture and hydrogen. It is exciting to see the words "clean energy" on the agenda this week, though, because that is the conversation that we need to be having. This commission needs to be having a comprehensive discussion about how it intends to address astronomical energy rates and climate resiliency in the county, while taking advantage of federal funding for these initiatives, and not supporting one-off projects that are actually unsustainable, dangerous, and further empower utilities to charge us more for fracked gas. We need to be discussing real clean energy solutions, not dirty options. Unfortunately, public comment doesn't afford the time necessary for a full discussion on clean energy options, and that is why we need a public workshop where we can hear from ex- water and not let industry players suck up more than their fair share. Furthermore, these projects are a waste of taxpayer dollars. It is our money, and this is not what we are asking for. The commission must drop these dangerous scams and start the real conversation about transitioning to truly clean renewable energy in Hillsborough County. Please schedule an Affordable Clean Energy Public Workshop so that we can find real solutions for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Isabella, followed by Peter Horstman, and then Ron Weaver. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Isabella Sardariaga, and I'm an organizer with GenCleo at USF and also a member of the Rate Hikes Coalition, and I'm also an environmental science and policy student at the university. And I'm here today to address and oppose Agenda Item F2 on the feasibility for a carbon capture pilot project that would produce hydrogen. And alongside that, I'm also addressing the inability for the commission to follow through with their decision to vote on Affordable Energy Public Workshop today. And I should start by saying that I'm excited that this is my first commission meeting that I'm attending, and I mean, looking forward to addressing an agenda item for the first time, and also that clean energy is becoming a conversation that we can have. However, for me and the work that I do, this feels like a one step forward, three steps back situation, considering that myself alongside the Rate Hikes Coalition has been working effortlessly on progress towards a clean and just transition to affordable and clean energy. And this is, having the public workshop would be part of our shared goal. And every day is an important day to make an impact, and the fact that we couldn't have this day will set us back, and it really does disappoint me. Furthermore, in relation to the Agenda Item F2 on the feasibility of carbon capture to produce hydrogen, this is actually not a feasible solution by any means, and I learned this actually by taking on a mapping project about a year ago on biologic carbon sequestration, which is allowing our natural preserved environment to naturally conserve carbon, capturing carbon. And to me, it was also the most interesting thing I had come across at the time, yet in the trenches of the research, you'll find and realize that supporting this project means the complete phase-out of fossil fuels is not in the conversation because carbon capture storage technology has shown a net increase in emissions, has negative health consequences in the event that a pipeline erupts, and they don't even have capacity to store more than just relying on our natural areas to conserve the carbon. And my biggest concern is that this project does not address the need to limit or rid the use of finite resources, coal, oil, and gas, so we should not trust this project in order to sustain ourselves from CO2 emissions. And lastly, the Agenda Item is an opportunity to push the need for a real discussion through a public workshop that addresses clean, affordable energy and push back against dirty options. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Peter Horstman, followed by Ron Weaver, and then Todd Randolph. Is Mr. Horstman here? No? Okay, Ron Weaver, followed by Todd Randolph, and then Cynthia Kowitsky.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. My name is Ron Weaver, 4403 West Dale. Why would anyone ever deliberately tax themselves from a warm bed in 46-degree weather? And I would this morning for your item F3 on the renewal of the community investment tax, and I would do so because of our $13 billion transportation deficit, because 270,000 of our people cannot afford a car, and there are those who are blind and disabled and who need, desperately need our help with transportation. If we were Becker Mayfield and we were looking at the coverage of Godwin and then Evans, and we were looking for some relief because we'll find Edmonds and we'll find Tompkins, but guess what our coverage, double coverage of Evans and Godwin is? It's for the 2010 failure of a referendum for transportation. That's the coverage, that's the loss of our ability to function. The second loss to our touchdown, in this case, is the 2018, yes, 57% of the people voted for transportation funding courage, but it was thrown out by a court because of the destination of the funds. So in 2010, we failed because we didn't identify where the money would go. In 2018, we over identified where the money would go, and the court threw it out. So we've got some failures here. We've got some double coverages of some things that are not working. We've got to find other things that do work, like renewal of the community investment tax at its current, at its half-cent level, but we need three other parts of this solution and this game plan. Number two, we need a five-cent gas tax, like all the other jurisdictions around us. It requires five votes of this commission, and we need a five-cent gas tax. Why? Because even if we renew the community investment tax at that half-cent for another 30 years and it raises another $2 billion, only 26% went to transportation, 23% to schools, and the other 4%, 5% each to nine other things that are the 11 beneficiaries of the community investment tax. That means we only get an eighth as much money from 26% of the community investment tax going for transportation, so we've got to supplement it. And the second receiver, in order to get this touchdown, is going to have to be a checkoff of the receiver of a five-cent gas tax that requires five of your votes. Number three, we need the legislature to send back the $562 million plus interest, as fortunately the governor recommended, in order to get that $562 million plus interest back to Hillsborough County roads, not a tax refund, not a tax holiday. And number four, we need for our receivers, as we do our checkoff, to find out in the open field, state and federal matching, which means we got to get the money together to match state and federal monies, not let it go to everywhere else in the country. We need public-private partnerships, and we need for us to step up to the funding courage to help the 270,000 people who can't afford a car and others who are blind and disabled, and therefore, I suggest to you that if we put together a four-part plan, number one, renew the community investment tax, leave it with 26% for transportation and 23% for school. And my time is up. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Todd Randolph, and followed by Cynthia Kowitsky, and then Nancy Stevens. Good morning, sir.
Hello, good morning. My name is Todd Randolph. I am a resident of Tampa, here in Hillsborough County. I'm here today to encourage the county commissioners to oppose item F2 on carbon capture for the production of hydrogen, and instead, I would like to encourage the commissioners to explore discussions on real energy solutions and to schedule a public workshop on clean, affordable energy. The discussion of carbon capture is about as realistic as nuclear fusion. It has not been proved. Pilot plants throughout the nation have not been shown to provide a real net positive to provide answers for the energy problems that we are facing. It's not a realistic technology at this point, especially to be explored here in Hillsborough with Hillsborough taxpayer dollars. Additionally, to see it being used for the production of hydrogen, which is a water-intensive process, is not ideal. I'm a resident of Tampa. I got the letter in the mail a month ago about water restrictions. I, in my decades of being here in Tampa, I do not recall these restrictions being in place because we are facing such a severe water shortage, and then to see propositions for attracting these industries that will require even more additional freshwater usage is not ideal at this point. Instead of F2, please, I would like to redirect focus on scheduling a public workshop on clean, affordable energy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Randolph. Cynthia Kowitsky, followed by Nancy Stevens, and then Ashton Maddox. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Cynthia Kowitsky, and I'm an environmental science student at USF. Before I start, I would like to thank the commission for working with organizations such as Food and Water Watch thus far, and I hope to see this camaraderie for clean energy in the future. However, I am concerned about Chair Ken Hagan's decision to add the Agenda Item F2 promoting a carbon capture program. Carbon capture programs are just another way to continue the use of dirty fossil fuels and disregard the need for urgent climate action. Carbon capture attempts have been unsuccessful and result in 20% to 40% more fossil fuel consumption, leading to an increase in price of fuel due to a decrease in fuel reserves. Failed carbon capture projects have cost us billions in taxpayer dollars and will cost us billions more, so why invest in this solution? According to Stanford University, oil will run out in 30 years, gas will run out in 50 years, and coal will run out in 70 years, with this possibility of being sooner if we keep increasing our dependency on fossil fuels. My question to the commission is why do you find it imperative to implement policies that will expedite depletion of your precious fossil fuels? The science is there, and we will inevitably run out of fossil fuels. If you do not take action now to adapt to the ever-changing supply of fuel, what will future generations do when they run out? Furthermore, hydrogen energy results in high consumption of water and relies on fossil fuels to create the energy to produce it. Hillsborough County has been on a drought warning and has established water restrictions this past year. Therefore, why would we waste precious water on an energy source that has shown to be ineffective? These projects are a waste of taxpayer dollars. It is our money, and this is not what we're asking for. This commission needs to be having a comprehensive discussion about how it intends to address astronomical energy rates and climate resiliency in this county. Schedule a Clean, Affordable Energy Public Workshop now to prevent catastrophe. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kowitsky. Nancy Stevens. Ms. Stevens here, followed by Ashton Maddox, and then Dr. Sarah Combs. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Nancy Stevens. I'm also here to speak on F2, and I'm happy to see that there's an item on the environment here, but I'd like to encourage the group to say no to this particular item because it's expensive and doesn't actually help the environment. Why would Hillsborough County spend time on a carbon capture pilot project? It's unproven technology, and we have more pressing needs like roads and transportation and affordable housing, and we have expensive utilities that must be addressed. Hillsborough County is not in the business of energy research. Again, I applaud a focus on clean energy, but why would Hillsborough County spend time and money on a clean energy of the future? There are clean energy, clean energy solutions of the present that the county can invest in now to save money and reduce carbon emissions. What are these solutions? Solar panels and electric vehicles. This proposed project produces many risks without uncertain outcomes. Hydrogen produced during the carbon capture project is called Blue Hydrogen, is expensive and uses large amounts of water and large amounts of energy to produce, and doesn't even necessarily reduce climate emissions. Hillsborough County should not be betting taxpayer dollars to fund resource on this unproven technology and to produce hydrogen that's expensive and uses our precious water sources and will not actually benefit the people and the environment. Hillsborough County can encourage investing in the clean technology of today. The county can invest in its own solar energy and electric vehicles to help reduce county costs and climate emissions. Hillsborough County could also help citizens and businesses control electricity costs by working to make solar energy more accessible to all. Please don't spend Hillsborough County money and resources on a project that doesn't benefit our citizens, and schedule a Clean, Affordable Energy Public Workshop so that we can discuss real clean energy solutions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Ashton Maddox, followed by Dr. Sarah Combs, and then Jamie Sanchez. Good morning.
Good morning. Happy New Year to everyone here. My name is Ashton Maddox. I'm a member of GenCleo USF and the Tampa Rate Hikes Coalition. I'm here to speak to you all about the delaying of the Affordable Energy Public Workshop and what has instead taken its place at today's meeting, the Carbon Capture Project. While I agree that carbon capture initially sounds like a great idea, almost a perfect solution, actually, the data behind it doesn't make it seem as an equitable option. So, for some quick facts, not to sound redundant, but carbon capture programs at power plants have failed in their purpose. That is due to a net increase in emissions and actually need up to 40% more fossil fuels in order to operate. Next, 95% of carbon capture is currently used for enhanced oil recovery, and if we were to use renewable energy instead, using renewables to produce hydrogen is still about 20% to 40% less efficient than using renewable energy directly. And then finally, the use of hydrogen energy is very water-intensive, as other people have said this morning, which is not achievable when the city of Tampa Bay has been under a drought warning since late last year. So with all these details in mind, the idea of carbon capture appears to be counterproductive. When the goal of creating a cleaner city and county is considered, carbon capture does not seem to be an option when it's instead counterproductive. With all that said, I am not an expert. So when we, so what we need instead is for there to be a workshop where experts can come and give their opinions. What we need is to not waste taxpayer dollars and to instead give us what we are vouching for. So I please ask you to consider actual clean options to lead the county toward a future that is cheaper and cleaner energy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Sarah Combs, followed by Jamie Sanchez, and then Letitia Haley Brown. Good morning.
Good morning, County Commissioners and County Staff. My name is Sarah Combs, and I'm the CEO at University Area CDC and have been blessed to do this work for, gosh, over 13 years now. First and foremost, we want to thank Hillsborough County for all the support that you all have provided over the number of years that University Area CDC has been doing this work, over 25 years, in fact, and we're so thankful for our partnership. I'm here to speak on behalf of the University Area CDC Programming and Services Contract under Economic Development that will be voted on at the February 7th Board Meeting. I'm asking you to approve this contract, which is currently in the approved county budget, and also to make you aware that University Area CDC has been providing services on this contract since October 1st. Through this contract, last year, University Area CDC has been able to prevent 154 individuals from being unlawfully evicted and keep them in their homes, serve over 4,500 individuals through our Get Moving Health and Wellness Program, which is county-wide, case-managed 211 individuals through our Steps for Success Case Management Program, which is county-wide, serve over 3,700 individuals county-wide through our Prodigy Cultural Arts Program, operate our computer lab where our residents can apply for jobs and get training. We're able to harvest over 1,800 pounds of organic food for residents at Harvest Hope Park and provide over 5,000 hours of public safety. That is nearly 8,600 individuals that have been served by this contract, equating to $87 per person. This funding is not just about financial figures, it's an investment in the heart and soul of our community, a low-income community of color that deserves to have continued support for essential programs and services. For those of you maybe not familiar with the area, it's a transient area that has less than 10% homeownership. There are great disparities, great challenges in the, in the University Area, of which University Area CDC was created and designed over 25 years ago in partnership with Hillsborough County in order to address. Our place-based holistic approach is one that involves and engages the community by including them in the process of creation, implementation, and management, all of which is built on trust, and the goal is self-sufficiency. In considering this contract, I urge you to view it not just as a financial commitment, but as an investment in the future of the University Uptown community, one of the only affordable housing communities left in the county. It's investment in the dreams and the aspirations of our residents, especially those who may not have the same opportunities as others. Through your support, we're not just running programs and services, we are creating a legacy of positive change, truly transforming a community and the residents who live there. We are fostering a community where individuals can thrive, potential is nurtured, and where every resident has a chance to build a brighter future. In conclusion, I implore you to approve our contract for programs and services in the University Area. Your decision will resonate far beyond these chambers, shaping the destiny of our community and leaving an incredible mark on the lives that we serve. Thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Combs. Next three speakers, Jamie Sanchez, followed by Letitia Haley Brown, and then Taylor Hayes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Sanchez. I'm Program Manager for Steps for Success Self-Sufficiency Program. The Steps for Success is a self-sufficiency case management program. The participants meet with a case manager upon entry into the program and have an assessment completed to address family needs once family is stabilized. Financial literacy education, development of a monthly household budget, and an individual goal plan are some of the tools used, along with other resources, while participants are in the program. They work on personal goals, seeking better employment through certifications, completing a GED, or learning to speak English, enabling them to work towards self-sufficiency. The following is a testimonial from a previous program participant. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak before you today as a participant in the case management services that have made a profound impact on my life and countless others in our low-income communities. I stand here not only as a beneficiary, but as a voice for those who may not have the chance to share their stories. The case management services provided to residents in low-income communities play a pivotal role in addressing the unique challenges that many individuals and families face daily. These services are not just That is nearly 8,600 individuals that have been served by this contract, equating to $87 per person. This funding is not just about financial figures, it's an investment in the heart and soul of our community, a low-income community of color that deserves to have continued support for essential programs and services. For those of you maybe not familiar with the area, it's a transient area that has less than 10% homeownership. There are great disparities, great challenges in the University Area, of which University Area CDC was created and designed over 25 years ago in partnership with Hillsborough County in order to address. Our place-based holistic approach is one that involves and engages the community by including them in the process of creation, implementation, and management, all of which is built on trust and the goal is self-sufficiency. In considering this contract, I urge you to view it not just as a financial commitment, but as an investment in the future of the university uptown community, one of the only affordable housing communities left in the county. It's investment in the dreams and the aspirations of our residents, especially those who may not have the same opportunities as others. Through your support, we're not just running programs and services, we are creating a legacy of positive change, truly transforming a community and the residents who live there. We are fostering a community where individuals can thrive, potential is nurtured, and where every resident has a chance to build a brighter future. In conclusion, I implore you to approve our contract for programs and services in the University Area. Your decision will resonate far beyond these chambers, shaping the destiny of our community and leaving an incredible mark on the lives that we serve. Thank you for your time, consideration, and commitment to our community.
Thank you, Dr. Combs. Next three speakers, Jamie Sanchez, followed by LaTisha Haley Brown, and then Taylor Hayes. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. My name is Jamie Sanchez. I'm program manager for Steps for Success Self-Sufficiency Program. The Steps for Success is a self-sufficiency case management program. The participants meet with a case manager upon entry into the program and have an assessment completed to address family needs once family is stabilized. Financial literacy education, development of a monthly household budget, and an individual goal plan are some of the tools used, along with other resources, while participants are in the program. They work on personal goals, seeking better employment through certifications, completing a GED, or learning to speak English, enabling them to work towards self-sufficiency. The following is a testimonial from a previous program participant. I am grateful for the opportunity to speak before you today as a participant in the case management services that have made a profound impact on my life and countless others in our low-income communities. I stand here not only as a beneficiary, but as a voice for those who may not have the chance to share their stories. The case management services provided to residents in low-income communities play a pivotal role in addressing the unique challenges that many individuals and families face daily. These services are not just a lifeline, they are a beacon of hope, offering practical assistance and guidance to navigate the complexities of life. As someone who has directly benefited from these services, I can attest to the tangible and lasting improvements they bring to our community. Case management goes beyond providing temporary relief, fosters long-term stability by addressing the root causes of challenges, empowering individuals to overcome obstacles, and promoting self-sufficiency. These services act as a bridge connecting residents to essential resources, healthcare, education, and employment opportunities that may otherwise seem out of reach. By continuing to invest in case management, we invest in the resilience and well-being of our community members. It is essential to recognize that the impact of these services extends far beyond individuals. It contributes to overall health and vibrancy of our community. Stable and empowered residents become active participants in local growth and development, creating a positive ripple effect that benefits us all. In advocating for the continuation of these vital services, I urge the county commissioners to consider the long-term benefits and the positive outcomes they bring to our low-income communities. By doing so, we affirm our commitment to building a more equitable and compassionate society where everyone has opportunity to thrive. I appreciate your dedication to the well-being of our community, and I sincerely hope that you will continue to support and prioritize the continuation of case management services for the benefit of all residents. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Sanchez. LaTisha Haley Brown, followed by Taylor Hayes, and the last speaker is Brandon Fung. Good morning.
Good morning, county commissioners and county staff. My name is LaTisha Haley Brown, and I'm honored to stand before you as the former proud principal of Mort Elementary, a community partnership school. Mort holds a unique position known as one of the second highest transit schools with over 700 elementary students ages five to 11 and an overwhelming 98% of students on free and reduced lunch. Over the past eight years, Mort Elementary has forged a powerful alliance with the University Area CDC, collaborating on various fronts. As partners, we engaged in discussions addressing the community barriers that significantly impact the lives of our most vulnerable population. The partnership with UACDC has provided vital support and resources to our students and their families. Through this partnership, I have the privilege to refer parents to computer classes, ensuring that they can acquire essential digital skills. The Get Moving Program, which is walking school bus program facilitating safe and transportation for students, allowing students to get to school safely every day. Witnessing students participate in dance classes over the summer foster a confidence and teamwork as a testament to the diverse opportunities made available through our collaboration. The Prodigy Arts Research Program allowed students to discover strengths beyond traditional academic subjects like reading, writing, or math. This program became a beacon of artistic expression and personal growth for those who talents don't lie in the academic realm, but instead in photography. However, the most impactful surprise came when UACDC recognized a significant obstacle, the dark early mornings preventing students from reaching school due to the lack of streetlights and sidewalks. Understanding this challenge, UACDC took decisive action supporting Mort Elementary as a school and a lifeline for our students. In doing so, UACDC not only supported the transformation of Mort as an educational institution, but proudly changed the lives of our students. It became evident that our dedicated staff could effectively teach if students were struggling to attend school or worse, facing eviction. The programs initiated by UACDC have been a beacon of hope, addressing critical issues and ensuring that our students not only can come to school, but thrive in a supportive environment. As I stand here today, I express my sincere gratitude for the impactful partnership we have experienced over the last few years. Many organizations are not committed to needs around the country, but very few are committed to those that are across the street. The support from the UACDC has been both transformative and vital. I eagerly anticipate the continued collaboration and the positive impact it will undoubtedly have on the lives of our students we collectively serve. Please consider voting yes on February 7th so we can continue transforming lives every day. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Taylor Hayes, followed by Brandon Fung. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Taylor Hayes, and I am a resident of Tampa Bay, specifically Hillsborough County. I am here to talk about the UACDC and the impact that it's had on me personally. I am a resident here, I am a working professional, and the UACDC has been vital in my personal and professional development over the last year. I've had the opportunity of utilizing specifically their art classes as an adult, primarily due to the option that it's free. It is a free service provided here in this community. And the reason that I started going was because, to be very honest and to be very frank, I was quite depressed coming out of the pandemic, coming out of lockdown, and not to mention that I have a very high-stress job like most of us have, working professionals, as I'm sure you all have. So for me, it was an outlet, it was a time to step away from my desk, get away from my computer, and it was really, it's just an hour of a creative outlet. And I cannot express to you how much it has meant to me last year and how it has really brought me together within the folds of the Tampa Bay community. Here at the UACDC, the art classes, like I have mentioned, serve as a means to express yourself, to learn how to do art, but really, it's more of a gathering place. In the last year that I have been there, I have made friends, I have made acquaintances, I have found shoulders to cry on during some of my most needing times this past year. And I couldn't be more grateful to the UACDC providing this service to me, as well as many of my friends that I have enforced and persuaded and begged to come, and they have loved it just as much as I have. I'm very privileged to not have any children at this point in my life, and the adult services, I think, are just as impactful as they are for the children. And of course, I'm talking specifically about the art class, but the rest of the services they provide, as well as the computer aspect, again, as a working professional, has been very, very helpful for me. One of the things that have been talked about, particularly among my generation, I'm a millennial, is the third place, the third place for us to go and to hang out, that's not going to cost an arm and a leg, that's not going to force us to buy drinks, to buy food, to really just force us to spin, spin, spin. And to be quite honest, in this current economy, it's difficult. I have to buy groceries, I have to pay my bills, I have to pay my ever-increasing rent. This is a free community space. This is a free community space. This is that third place that we're all looking for so, so desperately. And again, I want to reiterate that it is a community space that I'm just very, very grateful for, and it has changed my life phenomenally. I am no longer depressed, I am much better functioning at my job, I'm a federal contractor, and I want to thank you for your time.
Appreciate it. Last speaker this morning, Brandon Fung. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Hello, commissioners, my name is Brandon Fung, and I represent Fortify Financial, a PACE provider here in Florida. I'm here to address an ongoing issue between the Florida PACE Funding Agency, Hillsborough County and its tax collector, as well as several other counties and tax collectors around the state. As you may or may not know, back in late 2022, the Florida PACE Funding Agency completed a judicial bond validation, which included a preemption clause, allowing them to operate statewide. My organization, Fortify Financial, is a PACE provider under the FPFA. However, Fortify does not have any influence over the actions of the FPFA, nor did we have anything to do with the judicial validation. Fortify provided a copy of this judicial bond validation ruling to our outside counsel, and based on years of extensive case law, they deemed it valid, and we began to operate in good faith. It became clear very quickly that certain counties and their tax collectors had a different opinion about the FPFA ruling, and they have refused to place these assessments on the tax roll. Now, to clarify, I do not represent the FPFA or its interests, I just represent Fortify, its affected customers, contractors, and I'm here to help solve this issue so that your constituents can be spared from the crossfire of this intergovernmental issue. We believe the courts or legislature will resolve the preemption issue, but it still leaves us with a problem to address here in Hillsborough County. We cannot pay the contractors for this work without assurance that the assessment will be on the tax roll, and your tax collectors indicated that they won't do so without an interlocal agreement. So the solution to this problem is a curative interlocal agreement. This is a short-term agreement that only encompasses the affected homeowners, allowing those assessments originated during a specific period of time to be placed on the tax roll so projects can be finished and funded, and our customers can repay the obligation in a manner they anticipated, which is through the tax roll. I will send around a draft copy of this ILA after the meeting for your consideration. Our only concern here is making sure that these homeowners can resolve the mass confusion and possible economic harm that they are currently experiencing due to this intergovernmental dispute, as well as contractors who put out their own money and materials that'll need to be made whole. The FPFA is not being harmed by failing to put these assessments on the tax roll, but your constituents and contractors are. Again, I believe we can resolve this issue with a curative interlocal agreement, which I'll provide electronically for your review, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate your comments. That closes the public comment portion of the agenda. Before we approve the entire consent, I know we had one item that was removed for highlighting by Commissioner Owen, A14.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this is just some good advice, or some positive news for the public here. Agenda A14, this has to do with approving a locally funded agreement between Hillsborough County and the Florida Department of Transportation to design and construct a westbound turn lane for Boyette Road at the US 301 Signalize intersection. And Commissioner Myers, this will greatly impact our district. I drive this road every day, and unfortunately, this is a road that so many people get in the middle lane because they're trying to go left, and if you get in the right lane, you are forced to go right. So it can back up all the way to the post office. So this is just a really positive thing that I think the public needs to know about. Just some highlights, the project aims to enhance safety and alleviate congestion in one of the fastest-growing areas in Hillsborough County. Safety improvements in this project will include pedestrian crossings, countdown pedestrian crossing signals, reflective payment markers, reflective thermoplastic lane markings, and retroflected signs for nighttime visibility. The project is a collaborative effort between the county, FDOT, and federal funds to make this project possible. This will result in a positive impact of safety, transportation infrastructure, and growth in the community. The project has approved transportation improvement within the county's adopted FY 2425 Capital Improvement Program. The Florida Department of Transportation will deliver the project through a design-build contract, and an important other thing to note is that this is going to be funded, it's a three-way partnership. Our responsibility is $930,570 of a $14,981,292 project. So I really want to commend, especially Kim Byers and Josh Bellotti, who are here, for all your hard work on this. I know you've rolled up your sleeves, and this is just a real positive thing for Hillsborough County, and I just wanted to highlight it. So we can move it back on consent. Thanks.
All right. With that, can we have a motion to approve?
Move for approval.
Motion to approve the entire consent by Commissioner Myers, then Commissioner Cohen. Any other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay. Bonnie, first item?
First item is Item D1. This is a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance providing for temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops. This is the second public hearing, and Johanna Lundgren from the county attorney's office will take you through this item.
Good morning, board. This is the second public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance providing for temporary moratorium on the establishment of vaping retail shops within 500 feet of any public or private elementary, middle, and secondary school for a period of 180 days following the effective date of the ordinance. The board did conduct the first public hearing on the ordinance on December 20th, 2023, and to briefly recap our status, the board voted to adopt really the same ordinance on May 3rd, 2023. However, Senate Bill 250 was adopted during the 2023 legislative session, and it nullified the board's action on the ordinance. Following recent amendments to Senate Bill 250, which exempted the county, the ordinance is really back before the board for consideration for adoption. So this morning, the board is requested to hold a second public hearing and vote to adopt the ordinance this morning. Once the ordinance is in effect, it will allow time for staff to prepare regulations in the Land Development Code, which will regulate the location of these types of establishments in proximity to schools. I'm available for any questions.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? No, Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for all your hard work, as well as my colleagues. Thank you all for your support. Not to really rehash too many numbers, but the joint study by the FDA and the Center for Disease Control has stated that over 2.55 million high school and middle schoolers are currently vaping. In Hillsborough County, through these efforts, we have located 200 vape shops within 500 feet of a school. So this is very, very important. Just seeing these numbers are really concerning, and I also want to state that I've been reached out by a few vape shop owners, and they absolutely agree with this. And they say, you know, these should not be located so close to a school. If you drive around, you can see that the way they advertise on the front of their mirrors, they have cartoon characters and things like that. And if you walk in one, you walk in one, and it's selling candies and all kinds of stuff, to me, that's not marketing to us, that's marketing to kids. So this is going to be for the adoption of the ordinance, which will give our staff time to come before us through the Land Development Code to make these changes. So I will gladly move for adoption. Thank you.
Okay, we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Owen, then Commissioner Wostel. I have no comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Okay, great. Next item?
Thank you. We have a little bit of time before the next item, which is at 10:15, so we can move to the regular agenda. The first item is Item B1. This is to approve a locally funded agreement and three-party escrow agreement between the county and the Florida Department of Transportation. This relates to Big Bend road widening, and Josh Bellotti with Engineering and Operations is here to present this item.
Good morning, Josh.
Thank you very much. Good morning, commissioners, Josh Bellotti, Engineering and Operations Department. With this item, I just wanted to take the opportunity to talk a little bit about Big Bend Road because it is such an important corridor for the south part of the county's transportation network. We've got a lot of different things going on there, a total capital investment of about $181 million between the county, the state, and federal funding. So this image here gives you kind of a lay of the land of the entire corridor and the different efforts that are going on. At the heart of it all is the interchange project, the 275, or I'm sorry, the 75 interchange project that is being done by FDOT right now. And then on either end of that, we have what we affectionately refer to as the bookend projects that continue that widening effort out from the interchange westward towards US 41 and then eastward towards US 301. So to start with the interchange project, just to give you a quick update on where that stands, so as I mentioned, that's underway by FDOT right now. You've seen that work in progress, they're making some good progress with construction. That is being constructed by FDOT through a local funding agreement with the county, and their projected construction completion right now is showing is mid-2025. So then, the next piece that we have is, this is the east side of the Big Bend corridor, and this is going from the interchange end of that project at Simmons Loop all the way out to US 301. And that's the item that we have before you today with B1. It would be a local funding agreement for this portion of the Big Bend corridor. You can see we've got a project split here between the county and the FDOT grant, which is the LFA for 13 million. So assuming that gets approved and moves forward, we'd be able to continue completing the design and go into construction towards the end of this year. And then, so a little bit further out in the plan, we have the west end of the corridor out towards US 41. So that project is also planned for a grant to be received by FDOT in FY 25, so that'll be a future LFA that you guys will see, and that could possibly start construction towards the end of '25 as well. And then further out, a few years beyond that into FY 29, we expect another grant for a trail project that would consist of a pedestrian overpass in that section of Big Bend as well. So then, just to wrap up, coming back to this, reminding you that, you know, what we have here before you today is the, what you see as labeled as number three in green, the eastern portion of the Big Bend improvement from Simmons Loop to US 301, the locally-funded agreement. So with that, I'll be happy to hear any questions you have about it.
All right, great. Appreciate the presentation. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I just wanted to say, it was a really great presentation, clean and great graphics and... and highlights and points, and so kudos. Really good.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Appreciate that.
All right. Can we have a motion? Motion to approve, I think Commissioner Cohen and Owen and Commissioner Wostel for the second. And no other comments? Please accord your vote.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
All right. Next item?
Thank you. We're going to bring Josh back up here again along with Scott Stromer. These are three items, Item B2, 3, and 4. This is for ongoing and as-needed sidewalk repairs. First, Item B2 relates to District 2.
Let me ask you a question before you guys start. We already approved the one for District 1. Is that correct?
Yes, we did on November 1st.
Okay. Thank you.
And that was going to be part of my...
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Kim Barr, Assistant County Administrator for Public Works, thanks for stealing my thunder, Commissioner. Scott will be before you shortly to ask for approval for Items B2, 3, and 4, and those are the sidewalk repair contracts for Districts 2, 3, and 4. Just as a reminder, D1 was awarded on November 1st in the amount of 5.3 million. These contracts were line item contracts, and basically contractors bid on each line item. There are 26 line items in each contract. All three contracts had very similar quantities in each line item. So when contractors bid, the difference in the amount is really based on the difference in the pricing for each line item. These were broken down into four different contracts to increase competition and also to facilitate the completion of these projects in a quicker manner. I'll turn it over now to Josh, and he can walk you through some of the methodology on how we develop these contracts.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. So to quickly go through, was going to give you a little bit of background. This relates to sidewalk repair, contract awards, Items B2, 3, and 4. A little bit of a refresher, you guys are, I'm sure, painfully aware of the size and volume of our backlog of sidewalk repairs across the county. We have a lot of sidewalks, and a lot of them are damaged and broken, and so we have a huge need. And, you know, unfortunately, we continue to see trip and fall accidents that are unfortunate and cause the county to have to pay out claims. So we did receive American Rescue Plan dollars, fortunately, and the board allocated 20 million of those dollars to fix sidewalks across the county. When that happened, 15 million of that was designated or restricted to underserved areas across the county, and then there was 5 million that was unrestricted. So as we looked at the plan to execute that volume of sidewalk repairs, which is great, and it's more money than the county had received before, we looked at dividing and having multiple contractors working simultaneously across the county to be able to get more of that work done. So we split those advertisements up by geographic area. You know, the strategy there is also, like Kim said, to get more competition, to allow for more MBE participation with multiple primes, and also to help us to advance these forward, because if you have an issue with one of the procurements, it wouldn't hold up the other three. So like was also mentioned before, we staggered the bids. So District 1 was done first. That one was awarded in November, and then the other three are ready to come before you today. Additionally, the board received money, or, you know, the county received money and programmed it into the FY 24 CIP program, an additional 5.7 million. And so we're planning to utilize these same contractors for that effort as well. And so kind of to build on what Kim mentioned, where there's different dollar amounts that you see on these contract awards, just to remind you that those don't reflect the current budget. Those are based on the unit pricing and the bids from the contractors and an estimate of the quantities that could be completed during the contract term. Note that these are multi-year contracts, so the dollar amount on the contract capacities is actually more than we have in the current budget. And the idea behind that is to be able to continue to utilize these contracts into FY 25, and we hopefully will be receiving even more money to fix sidewalks across the county. So with that, I'll close and turn it over to Scott to introduce the individual items.
Good morning.
Good morning. Scott Stromer, Procurement Services. Item B2 is asking the board to award and execute two-year agreement with the overall lowest response responsible bidder, Stage Door 2 Incorporated, for ongoing and as-needed sidewalk repairs in Commission District 2 at a up to a total cost of $8,659,000. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 10% was established for the project, and the recommended vendor has committed to achieving that goal. Commissioner recommends approval.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. The ARP funds, there were, there's 20 million that was allocated, did you say, for this project? The American Rescue Plan, federal funds?
Yes, that's correct.
And then I just want to point out, because this was so important, that we got this federal dollars for infrastructure. And I know that Congresswoman Castor was important in making sure that that happened and getting us allocations here in Hillsborough County. And I noticed, too, as well, with the Big Bend project, for 14 million, 11 million of that was also federal funding. So I just want to acknowledge that, because I think that's very important for the public to understand and for us to acknowledge.
Commissioner Wostel?
I just want to point out that the federal government simply clicks print. They acknowledge it from the Federal Reserve, so they have an endless amount of cash that they can dole out. And we have limited reserves, and we actually tax it off of people's backs through their homes. So thank you very much.
Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess what I'm asking, are we going to move for approval on B2 through B4? Is that how we're doing this, rather than taking each one?
I guess we're going individually.
We're going individually. Okay. Great. Well, I'll move for approval of the first one.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve of B2 by Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Myers and Wostel. And I'm just going to say, and I've said it before, sidewalks and resurfacing are the two biggest constituent concerns or complaints that we received. So I know that this will be well-received. It certainly improves the quality of life, I think, for our citizens, more so than anything else, other than maybe, again, resurfacing. Okay, please accord your vote.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
B3?
Item B3 is asking the board to award and execute two-year agreement with the overall lowest responsible bidder, Florida Asphalt Contractors LLC, doing business as Florida Asphalt and Concrete LLC, for ongoing and as-needed sidewalk repairs in Commission District Number 3, up to a total of $11,819,191. A disadvantaged business enterprise participation goal of 10% was also established for the project, and the recommended bidder has committed to achieving that goal. Procurement Services recommends approval.
I thank you. Commissioner Myers?
Move for approval.
Got a motion to approve. Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Kemp. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Finally, Item B4 is asking the board to award and execute a two-year agreement with the overall lowest responsible responsible bidder, Burgess Civil LLC, for ongoing and as-needed sidewalk repairs in Commission District Number 4, up to a total of $10,603,388. A disadvantaged participation goal was established for 10% and the recommended bidder has committed to achieving that goal. Procurement Services recommends approval.
Any questions, comments? Not going to have a motion. Motion approved. Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments? Please accord your vote. B4.
Motion carried. Seven is zero.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Scott. Bonnie?
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Hagan, your item, Item F3. This is to discuss the reauthorization of the community investment tax in 2024.
All right, thank you. Board members, during various board discussions over the last year or so, the CIT has been brought up as a potential funding source to address our critical infrastructure needs, notably transportation and fire rescue. This is a critically important issue that I've wanted to discuss sooner rather than later, but I also felt that timing was important and that we needed to first address other important issues, such as finalizing last year's budget. While we adopted our budget, it's 2024, and Election Day is less than 10 months away. That may seem like a long time. However, there are certain critical deadlines for ballot initiatives that are required, including the ordinance, ballot language, and OPAGA audit that must occur. So if the board is interested in moving forward with reauthorization in 2024, we really do not have that much time to make this decision. I say "if" because the original CIT does not expire until 2026, so the decision does not need to be made this year, although I feel very strongly that we need to move forward with reauthorization this year. That is based on the lack of current CIT capacity, all of our unfunded needs, particularly with fire rescue and transportation, as well as a lack of a dedicated transportation funding source. I think all these necessitate reauthorization this year. For example, with fire rescue, we know that we have over 20 fire stations that we need to address at an average cost, according to staff, of $10 million each for land acquisition and the station cost. And we also have to improve a number of existing fire stations that have been in existence for decades. And with transportation, we know that we have a minimum of, you can pretty much plug in the number, but a minimum of $1.5 billion in unfunded transportation needs. So the first decision that we need to make is whether to pursue reauthorization in 2024. As an aside, several years ago, the board considered reauthorization due to a significant bonding issue that left very little future revenues remaining. We ultimately decided not to move forward, partly because it reduced our bonding capacity. Thankfully, in the years following, revenues exceeded our conservative forecast, allowing for critical unfunded needs to continue to be addressed over the last few years. One thing I do want to point out is that based on a new state law, regardless of, my understanding is regardless of when a referendum is placed on the ballot, should it fail, you cannot just go right back two years later. You have to wait a minimum of 48 months. At least, that's my understanding of the new law. So if we decide to move forward in 2024, there are several issues that we'll need to address. I'm going to briefly identify a couple of them, then make a motion to schedule a workshop, and then open it up for any board discussion. The first is duration. The original CIT was for 30 years. However, it could be 10, 20, or 30. Secondly, will the school district be included? Again, the original CIT included school funding with 25% of the revenues that were taken off the top for the district. In recent years, the district has passed a referendum, and it's my understanding they have another one, they're considering another one for this year. Raymond James Stadium was included in the original referendum, and I've stated on several occasions that I do not anticipate a new stadium being included. But there are other countywide needs that should not only be funded out of the CIT, but they, you know, should they be designated so that the cities share in the cost, since it's a countywide need in service. For example, if we wanted to build an animal services shelter, that's something that the cities share in, and they should probably share in the cost as well. So anyway, not asking for any of these decisions to be made today. However, I do want to get board member input and feedback so we can give staff some direction. So I'm going to, I'm going to put a motion on the floor. I'll pass the gavel to the vice chair, and then we can discuss in more detail. But the motion is essentially just to schedule a workshop for staff to bring back as part of that, a report that should include a timeline for when the board decisions must be made, should we want to move forward this year, the duration options, the expected revenue to be generated, and the breakdown for the cities and counties, as well as scenarios with or without the schools being included. And finally, a chart or an explanation of how the original county CIT revenues were spent. So that's the motion, and we'll open it up for board members.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. And if staff wants to get ready to catch Mr. Weaver in the chair from falling out of their own chairs, I rise today to support your advocacy for the renewal of this tax. And I say that as the anti-tax commissioner. I'm supporting this tax for many reasons, and I think that we need to handle it in a very delicate way that breeds trust within the community, because make no mistake, they rightfully do not trust us with their money. I believe that if this tax isn't renewed, it would create crippling widespread damage throughout the county in ways that are probably unmeasurable, in ways that would probably force us to increase their unavoidable burden of property taxes to keep critical services like public safety and first responders properly funded. And that's just something that I absolutely can't get on board with, and I will do everything that I can to advocate for this tax to pass in my own capacity, as long as it's met in certain ways. I think as we go into this, I think that everyone should pull the meeting back in 2007, '08, or '09. I have it. I don't remember. I have the minutes somewhere. But essentially, the phrase has been mentioned here before, but our bond counsel came before this board back then and essentially gave advice that led to crippling damage, in my opinion, from the first CIT. It was their advice that led to, we get the 30 years that enables us to bond it, then for various reasons, we bond out almost the entire money, and then we can't meet day-to-day demand. So that is something that we absolutely must avoid. And for that exact reason, piling onto that, in order for us, and I believe, to truly breed trust, is that we just really recalibrate the tax, and we cut it down to 10 years. We kind of cut ourselves short at the ankle to be able to show them that we're going to do a lot of good, and we're going to demonstrate it, and we're going to go and attack those critical issues that we know are plaguing specifically the east side of the county, those issues that are in East Tampa. All of those things are met. I will be a loud advocate as the anti-tax commissioner to support the renewal of this tax. I do believe that it's critically important. I know that it's been hinted that the school board might be doing another tax. That might be another reason that I don't support us putting this on to the general ballot if they decide to go in. I'm more than happy to say that publicly. So I do believe, though, for everyone watching, as a loud anti-tax commissioner, this can be a good tax that prevents us from having to increase your property taxes. And for those reasons, I look forward to being an advocate for it.
Thank you. Commissioner Cohen?
Thank you. I think that the statements from the first two commissioners underscore what is probably the majority, perhaps the unanimous view of this board, that this money is desperately needed for the county, and the details of how it is spent and how it is structured are for us to work out. It seems to me that the really critical question is whether or not 2024 or 2026 is the year that is going to give us the best chance of success. And of course, none of us has a crystal ball, but we're going to have to be very pragmatic in the way that we approach that decision. And I really welcome this motion. I think it is not a moment too soon to get started on this discussion. And to the degree that I believe Commissioner Wostel's comments represent an open-mindedness to wherever the conversation leads us, I think it augurs really well that we'll be able to come up with a good decision here about how to move forward.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Myers?
And thank you. Thank you so much, Commissioner Wostel, for wanting to get out and help advocate to get this tax passed, and to you, Mr. Chair, for bringing this item up. I would like to have the opportunity to invite all partners who have received CIT funding in the past to our workshop. Would like to hear from them on what they anticipate on doing with funding. If that's not a conflict, I don't know, so I want to bring it up now. You know, we're the board of county commissioners. We always the one to take the lead. But if we're going to get this tax passed, it's going to take everyone who's receiving some funding to be out there to help advocate to get this tax passed, and it's just not falling on the board of county commissioners. And it's just not falling on the board of county commissioners. So I'd like to invite them to the workshop. There's no vote in the workshop, but we can hear from them during the discussion of the workshop. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, so that would be, because we don't usually have a format of having public comment at workshops, but I would agree with that. You know, maybe we have to add that? Do we have to add that into the motion to make sure that we have that? Does that waive, like, our format or rules?
Yes, I would suggest doing that. And then we can take care of the agenda and how we go about setting that up.
Okay, then.
Then I'll make it a motion.
I'll second. Or to make an amendment to the, or maybe there could be a friendly amendment?
Well, maybe if Commissioner Hagan, would you be amenable to the?
Oh, yeah, I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll take that as still Commissioner Hagan's, if you're amenable to it, so.
And just in terms of this, I think we have all realized, and so have the citizens of Hillsborough County, 57% voted for the 2018 tax because they know the needs. And that was just in transportation. And I think it's very clear. But I do think we need a transit set aside. This is strictly a capital. You know, this money can be spent strictly for capital. But I do think we need a transit set aside for capital projects somehow. And so I'm not sure how that would be. And maybe part of that workshop could be asking Hart to prepare some kind of, you know, budget. I'm not sure how specific we're going to be on this CIT. I guess we can find that out in the workshop. I would like, in the meantime, also, to have any kind of examples of what other communities have passed and their specificity in this, since this has been such an issue for us here, and what we would be permitted to do with regards to that or, you know, how we should move forward in that way.
Great. Commissioner Hagan, you have something else?
Yeah, I just want to say I welcome the board member feedback. I think it's excellent suggestion from Commissioner Myers. I'm open to having the transit discussion as well, if we can just have the information here. Because, I mean, a lot will go into this. I mean, the very first decision, obviously, is if we're going to move forward in 2024. But assuming we make that decision, a lot needs to go into that in addition to the duration. But again, if districts involved, if there are any other major projects that, you know, should be taken off the top, like what happened in the original CIT with the schools and with Raymond James Stadium, that other cities participate in. So, you know, I just welcome as much information that staff can bring back and having the cities here to have that conversation. Because again, based on my understanding of the new law, and Mary Helen, correct me if I'm wrong, it's not a situation where you can just turn right back around and go in two years. So it's critically important that we do our homework and make sure that we have the best possible ballot initiative and ordinance, you know, should we move forward. And just talking to folks over the last couple of years about it, most folks that I've spoken with, doesn't matter where they are on the spectrum, they look at it as a reauthorization or renewal, not a new tax, and are more inclined to support it. But at the same, I mean, and the only really benchmark that I have since I've been on here is when we put on the ballot the ELAP reauthorization. And I think that got close to 80% approval, from what I recall. Because again, it wasn't a new tax. It was a reauthorization. So now, that being said, I'm not saying this would be a cakewalk and we just go through the motions. But I think we've got a lot of homework to do in advance of this being on the ballot, so.
Yeah, thank you for your leadership. And I'll just make a couple of quick comments on this. You know, I'm going to be supporting this as well. I agree with a lot of what Commissioner Wostel said. I do want us to be careful not to get in the weeds talking about a 2018 tax. We've been down that road, and I think it needs to be important that we decipher the difference of what this is versus what the prior tax has been on the ballot for the last two elections. So I think it's really critical that we understand. This doesn't impact Tampa. This greatly impacts Temple Terrace. This greatly impacts the people of Plant City, those incorporated communities. So this is going to be very, very critical moving forward. And thank you, Mr. Chairman, for bringing this forward so that new commissioners, too, can roll up their sleeves and get the lowdown from bonding here. So I'll be supporting it as well. Commissioner Cohen?
I'm sorry, there were two things I wanted to just add before we vote. The first is that the suggestion had been made to me by the staff when we were talking that we should all be in person when we have this discussion, as opposed to virtual, which I think is a good idea, given the important nature of the discussion. And the second thing, just getting back to this prohibition issue of if it fails one year, coming back the next. I think it's important that the county attorney be prepared and on notice that we want that explained to us exactly what the provisions of that law are. Because when we started getting into discussions about it, it sounded like it was a little more complicated than, we may need to understand it. So I just wanted to put that on the record also.
And Mary Helen, that would be part of probably the workshop, right? Would we discuss that?
Absolutely.
So, good.
Absolutely.
Very good. All right, I don't see any more board discussions. So we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Myers. Please record your votes. Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. And just for everyone's calendar, you already have a workshop on your calendars that was on a hold, and that is for February 14th. So happy Valentine's Day. All right, our next item is item E1. This is at 10:30. This is a special appearance by Rob Higgins, the executive director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission, to present their semi-annual activity report.
Good morning, Rob.
Good morning, everybody, again, Rob Higgins. I'm executive director of the Tampa Bay Sports Commission. As always, just want to thank everybody for your continued support and vision, for making this the absolute best county on the planet to host sporting events of all shapes and sizes. I'll take you quickly through our biannual report for quarters three and four. Really wanted to start with this past month, though, where we hosted the NCAA Division One Women's Volleyball Championship for the second time. I've got some great news to report in the facts that on Thursday, which was the national semifinals, December 14th, we set the record for the largest attendance ever for an indoor college volleyball match. That record didn't last long, because three days later, for the national championship on Sunday, we actually broke our own record and had 19,727 people. Not only was the attendance record breaking, the viewership was as well. Nearly 2 million people watched the national championship, which took place for the very first time on ABC. So we got a chance to be on a broadcast channel for it. And then in tandem with the national championship, the American Volleyball Coaches Association Convention is hosted in our community. And the attendance for it was a record as well. For the first time ever, they eclipsed the 3,000 mark in terms of coaches that attended that championship. That event is back out to bid now, so we're working hard to try to bring it back much quicker than the 14-year gap that from when we hosted in '09 to then hosting in December of 2023. Speaking of the NCAA, I'll actually leave from here to meetings with the NCAA women's basketball staff. We're hosting them in 2025 with the NCAA Women's Final Four. That's a record for any city to host for a fourth time. So we're looking forward to it. And again, preparations are already underway. A little bit later on this month, we'll be hosting WWE for their Royal Rumble. It's an event that's going to bridge the bay, literally. January 27th, Royal Rumble will take place at Tropicana Field. And then two days later, we'll host Monday Night Raw right here at Amalie Arena. Tickets are moving fast for it, and both are on pace to be a sellout. And then next month, beginning of next month, we'll host the Savannah Bananas, one of the hottest sports properties in the world. You may recall, last year, we hosted them for two nights at Steinbrenner Field. Literally, the event sold out in seconds, not minutes. We were awarded a third night this upcoming year. We're one of 30 cities. We actually will kick off their entire tour, a tour that will see them travel to six different major league baseball stadiums, as well as 30 cities overall. Our youth and amateur market continues to be on fire. This past year, in terms of the fiscal year, we hosted 99 events across 28 sports. Our goal for the year was to generate 170,000 room nights. I'll tell you, the largest number of room nights we've ever done in a year was 220,000. That included a Super Bowl. This past year, without a Super Bowl, we generated 254,000 room nights. Certainly, quarter three went really well with over 58,000 room nights. You see a variety of different sports, everything from soccer to rugby to cheerleading to the NCAA Men's Frozen Four that we hosted. And then in quarter four, again, a great mix of different sports, everything from bodybuilding to track and field to our Road to Tampa Bay Invitational that took place as well. Want to just give you a brief update related to the Sportsplex, which continues to thrive. In 2023, we hosted 32 events. Those events generated over 82,000 hotel visitor room nights. You may recall, the pre-construction consultant's report had identified or projected 43,000 room nights for that same year, year five. So 82,000 as compared to 43,000. When you look at the overall totals for the first five years, pre-construction, the feasibility study that was done predicted 151,000 room nights. And we, in tandem with our good friends at the Tampa Sports Authority, as well as through your investment and vision, have generated 224,000. So that's a 48% increase over what the consultant's study identified in advance. And then lastly, I'll just end with one more stat. I shared it with you last time, but it's a stat that we're really proud of. This board, through your vision, invested $1.6 million in hotel bed tax with us this past year. We turned around and returned $2.6 million in hotel bed tax. That's bed tax direct. That's not the millions upon millions of dollars that takes place in terms of spending in our restaurants, our hotels, and our shops, all that economic impact that people quantify. That is just strictly bed tax. So again, we truly appreciate your investment. We're going to continue to work hard to do everything we can to provide the greatest return on that that we possibly can. Does anybody have any questions or thoughts?
Rob, I appreciate your presentation, and you and your team are doing a phenomenal job. And you highlighted it just now with the fact that the tremendous ROI that you provide. And it is such a conservative forecast, because again, I've mentioned it in my travel ball world with my daughter's softball team. You're not taking into account all the food and beverage and other things that take place. And in one trip over the summer, we went to Myrtle Beach. I, over four days, easily spent over $1,000. That, again, those sales taxes that are being received are not being calculated in his forecast. Now, I've stressed to Rob and Eric Hart that I want to start somehow conservatively, being able to reflect those numbers, because we're leaving a significant amount of dollars on the table that we're not showing, that we're realizing a return for our investment. But again, excluding that, more than doubling our investment. Couple other things real quick. The Sportsplex is absolutely killing it. Think it had 48, 49 events maybe total last year. I'm very, very proud to champion that facility. Savannah Bananas, again, that's one of the hottest things in the industry, and a great job on getting a third night and having their tour start here. And lastly, you mentioned WWE, and some people, you know, may not give that a whole lot of consideration. But I remember when we were having meetings with, in order to host WrestleMania a few years ago, I was blown away when they showed a slide that their social media following is more than every professional sport combined. So when you look at it from that perspective, it's a hell of an impact. So keep up the great job, Rob. And Commissioner Myers?
Commissioner's chair, you've said it all. Somebody's going to move to receive the report.
Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Myers and Commissioner Wostel. No other comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
Good job, Rob. Next item?
Thank you. Your next item is a board appointment. And I believe Glenda's going to do this today. This is to the Hillsborough River Technical Advisory Council.
Good morning, commissioners. Oops, sorry. Today, we have the Hillsborough River Technical Advisory Council for appointment. We only received one application for this board, and the applicant current serves on the Land Use Appeals Board. Staff is okay with this applicant to serve in both boards, so it is up to the commissioners to accept his application.
Commissioner Owen?
Yes, I'll move for approval, but we need to do a separate vote, correct? First, or two separate votes? One to approve him, and then two to waive the rules?
Yeah, we can do that, yeah.
Okay, so I'll move for approval.
Motion by Commissioner Owen, signed by Commissioner Wostel. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
If I may ask you, I will make a second motion to approve this gentleman for, to serve on two boards and waive the rules. Thank you.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, signed by Commissioner Wostel. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
And finally, I guess we need a motion to confirm.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, signed by Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carried. Seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Great job, Glenda. Next item?
Thank you. The next item is yours, Commissioner Hagan. This is item F2, to discuss a feasibility for a carbon capture pilot project.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, before I get to my planned comments, I just want to point out that I've been at this game a long time, and I got to tell you, I would have bet a lot of money that if anyone came down during public comment to oppose this, that it would not be environmentalist. I want to say that. But admittedly, environmental issues are a little out of my wheelhouse, with the exception of championing the preservation of Cone Ranch, the largest environmental land acquisition in Hillsborough County history. I've not made environmental issues my priority. So I'm going to keep my remarks at a very high level and not get into the weeds, because candidly, I'm not an expert in this area. When I was first briefed on this concept involving carbon capture and hydrogen production, my first thought, candidly, was that this was a liberal issue that was more likely to be implemented in California than in Hillsborough County. However, the first thing that I learned is that the Center for Houston's Future in Houston, Texas, began collaborating with this company, Low Carbon, in March 2022 on a regional clean energy hub based on carbon capture and hydrogen production. And then I found out that Governor DeSantis supports this technology, and in 2023, signed an MOU for a clean hydrogen hub in Polk County. Signed an MOU for a clean hydrogen hub in Polk County. Value of the hub is expected to be more than $1 billion. I attended this groundbreaking last year, and I indicated, and I included a brief backup, a brief article in the backup. Now, the United States government has established national decarbonization goals, including 100% carbon pollution-free electricity by 2035 and net-zero greenhouse gases by 2050. It's been stated that hydrogen can serve as a key enable of these goals in three of the most energy and emissions-intensive sectors, industry, transportation, and electricity generation. Now, I don't know what's going to happen nationally with these goals, but I do think it's important to point out that Hillsborough County has a history with carbon credits. We were state leader with our carbon credit program in public land, where we were first in the state to use public land ELAP property for carbon capture credits, where we receive $1 million per year from the Climate Trust. Additionally, our Resource Recovery Facility, which is managed by Cavanta, was one of the first waste-to-energy plants in the United States to produce carbon offset credits for sale on the voluntary market. These credits represent verified reductions in net greenhouse gas emissions achieved by avoiding landfills and generating energy at the facility. Now, again, if this was merely an environmental issue, I may not have brought this forward. But there are potentially significant economic and financial benefits that compelled me to look into and to be open-minded with this. Other companies have technology. Other companies have technology to capture carbon, but what distinguishes Low Carbon is their unique technology that allows carbon capture utilization. Now, Low Carbon suggested Hillsborough County has a site for a pilot project to demonstrate its carbon capture technology. The reason they're interested in Hillsborough County is due to the proximity to the Polk Hub and because of the county's existing Resource Recovery Facility. In general terms, Low Carbon proposes to install a one-ton pilot project to demonstrate the feasibility of its technology to capture carbon and generate hydrogen and other marketable commodities. The initial cost of the pilot project is 2.5 million. Low Carbon has indicated the cost would only be payable only if and when the year-long pilot project successfully demonstrates it can remove a minimum of one ton of carbon dioxide per day. If the pilot project is not successful, then Low Carbon has said no payment would be required from the county, and they would remove the equipment at its own cost. Assuming the pilot project is successful, then the county could choose to retain the unit by paying the 2.5 million to Low Carbon. We would also have an additional option to replace this with a larger unit, which has capacity to remove a minimum of 40 tons of carbon dioxide per day. Now, we heard today from a couple of the speakers that shouldn't be wasting taxpayer dollars. I want to point out that Low Carbon has represented that there are grants to cover most, if not all, of the additional cost of the facility. Now, granted, those are taxpayer dollars, but they're not Hillsborough County taxpayer dollars, I want to point out. In addition, Low Carbon also represents that there's a commercial commodities market for one or more of the hydrogen, of the byproducts resulting from their carbon capture. Also, hydrogen can be used for power generation, energy storage, transit, and in the maritime industry. Now, while there are a number of potential financial and environmental upsides to the proposal, it's incumbent for the county to ensure that the proposal provides a benefit to county residents and taxpayers. Now, I am sensitive to the fact that I was unable to provide any detailed information in advance of today's discussion. And without question, something like this, before pursuing significant information, would need to be considered before moving forward. So I'm going to make, I'm going to pass a gavel and make a motion that's essentially asking for more information. It's no more detailed than that, well, it is more detailed, but it's not any deeper than that. And I want to point out that our staff worked with me on crafting this motion to ensure that all of the relevant issues are included. So the motion is just to direct staff to evaluate the feasibility of a carbon capture pilot project proposal. Staff should analyze and report back to the board the following items: potential environmental permitting requirements, liability protections, the tri-party operating agreements between Cavanta and Low Carbon, construction plans, potential for the county to obtain and sell additional carbon capture credits, again, we're monetizing this, and opportunities to sell process byproducts on the commodities market, which, again, we're monetizing this. And then lastly, and most importantly, the grant sources to cover the cost of the permanent facility. So all that's in my motion. And welcome any other comments.
Got a motion by Commissioner Hagan. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Wostel.
This, this whole day of environmentalism is kind of messing with my head because earlier we celebrated the federal government and an environmentalist Congresswoman giving us millions of dollars for sidewalks. Cement is like the number-two highest-producing category of greenhouse gas in the world, which, of course, makes concrete, which creates sidewalks. So I guess what we're saying is we're congratulating the federal government for being one of the highest polluters in the United States of America for giving us that money. I don't understand why we, why we balk and we celebrate, we celebrate spending millions of dollars on things that we use every day, and we ignore the fact that they themselves are the highest contributors to the things that we're advocating against. Is there safeguards in place? I guess I heard that we said that if we don't get the money, if they don't get the exact tonnage in place, how do we know? Is like somebody from EPC, who's going to be able to speak to us that we trust that the data we're being given, that the one ton a day or whatever it was of carbon capture is like a legitimate, especially since this is a new, new effort? How do we, how are we going to verify that what's being captured was captured, especially since, you know, gas isn't intangible?
Commissioner Hagan, you want anything?
That's a great question, Commissioner Wostel. And I'd ask Mr. Horwiddell if he'd come forward. He's kind of been working with him on this, and I think he'd be a better one to answer. But one thing I do want to point out, you made it, you killed it with your comment about cement, because in some of the articles I've read, I mentioned the byproducts that come out of this, they infuse that in the cement, which actually, again, we monetize it. So, yes, so it's, you made an excellent point regarding that. Great.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Deputy County Administrator Greg Horwiddell. That is an excellent question, and part of staff's analysis and review does want to make sure that we verify that independently. So we would be evaluating who does that best, whether it is our own local entity or if there is a certified consultant that we hire to make sure that they're monitoring their production and actually are getting, we're getting the benefits that they purport to deliver to us. So we will, that will be part of our recommendation back to you.
Yeah, and I want to make, it's nothing about this company. It's just, we want trust and accountability, and it is new, and we do want people to have fresh air, and we want to look into these things if they do exist. But I want to make sure that this isn't something that, no matter where the money's coming from, that taxpayers aren't getting taken advantage of. So hopefully, hopefully it does work, and we have slightly fresher air here in Hillsborough County. So thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll just say, if you just do a fast perusal, and I did, and I'm familiar with this anyway from transit and others, by the way, I do not think there is any hydrogen-fueled powered bus, even though you'll see that on the side of a few buses, that are, that are, that have put that and displayed it without having the technology available yet. And the hydrogen does not come from water. I know a lot of people think that. Hydrogen comes from separating the fracked gas. At any rate, I just did a fast perusal, just headlines, I'll just give you a few headlines. And this, and this is just in the last year, even though this technology's been around for 20, 25 years. Scientific America, "Don't Fall For Big Oil's Carbon Capture Deception." Reuters, "Carbon Capture and Storage Is Dangerous." This is extremely volatile, that I've been assured of. The Bulletin of Atomic Scientists, "Carbon Capture Has A Long History, Period Of Failure, Period." Those are, you know, there's a lot of information on this to be had. I'm a little surprised that it's one particular company that is named that would get the advantage of this. And if that is true, then I think we should do at least what we have done for the not-for-profits by asking for their tax forms, by seeing their business plan, their viability outside this, because very many of these have had dangerous circumstances, if they ever get built, and are not viable, and are, you know, are simply take taxpayer dollars, whether it's federal, state, or local. And I assume that this, at least feasibility study, would be our local Hillsborough County tax dollars to go into this. Carbon capture and storage is about capturing man-made carbon and storing it underground. And if they were ever to apply this to a cement company, which it's true, it has a lot of carbon it produces, to capture that carbon, I'd be glad. This is producing their own carbon and then trying to capture part of that, and for what? But carbon capture and storage is about capturing man-made carbon and storing it underground. As a person who cares about the environment, this idea concerns me greatly. This is an unproven experimental technology. Maybe we could let that other plant go and figure out what that's doing before it ever expanded. This is a water-hungry technology, not because they use water to split the hydrogen atoms from, because they use water in the processing, and it takes a lot of water. So it would be using our water here that is so precious if it was ever built. With all our needs, I don't believe the county should pay for a feasibility study for this. And the company should forward its own study, be doing all this, and just moving ahead on its own without our help. And if state and federal grants, they can go after and get those. But I really, for the water use alone, I think it's not a technology that we want here in Hillsborough County.
Commissioner Hagan?
Just a couple of quick points regarding Commissioner Kemp's comments. I have not independently verified this, but they purport that hydrogen is used in significant ways for mass transit in Korea. Now, I don't know, again, I have not independently verified that, but, and I haven't been to Korea, but that's what they, that's what they purport. Secondly, regarding the carbon capture concerns, that's why I wanted to point out that Hillsborough County does have a history in this area. And thirdly, what little bit of independent research I've done, all the reports come from the Biden Administration's Department of Energy. So it certainly appears that the current administration, that I would think would be very environmentally sensitive to these type of issues, appear to support these type of processes. I just want to point that out. Commissioner Wostel?
Do we know if it has to be freshwater? Like, has that been confirmed? It was said, and like, is, I mean, are they going to hit up Mr. Cassidy and say, hey, what's the going rate? We're going to open a spigot? Are they going to come to Tampa Bay Water and ask me and Commissioner Cohen for it?
Great.
Commissioner, at this time, do you not believe there is...
Your mic's not on.
Sorry, is it on now?
It is.
Thank you. Commissioner, at this time, we are not intimately familiar with their entire process. That is part of what, when Commissioner Hagan brought this to us, we did some cursory review. We do not believe there is a substantial water requirement, but at this time, I cannot commit to that, nor can I say with certainty what the eventual needs might be with a 40-ton plant. I think that's what the commissioner is actually asking us to do, to dive into this more, get the answers that you all are raising, and bring back so that the board can carefully consider whether this is ultimately in the best interest of Hillsborough County.
All right, Commissioner Kemp, then we need to try to vote on it.
And I'll just say, for the record, in my reading, yes, they only can use freshwater. They cannot use saltwater or anything like that.
Great. Commissioner Hagan, you have something else?
Yeah, just real quickly. Again, all this is, is getting more information. Like I said, I went into it extremely skeptical, still remain a little skeptical, but I'm open-minded. Let's get the additional information. If it's, if it's a boondoggle, if it's a bad deal, you know, I'll make the, you know, I'll be the first one to abort the issue. But I think it does, there is value in at least pursuing it and seeing what, in getting more information. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp, you're not in the queue anymore, are you? Okay, great. All right, so we have a motion by Commissioner Hagan, a second by Commissioner Myers, and I'm just going to say I'm going to support it too as well. I think Commissioner Hagan came in here with an open mind to it and is being pretty detailed in the reports. Did you get all that, Bonnie? It was pretty detailed?
We did, but, you know, the ask is really for staff to do more research and to bring back a report, so.
Yeah, so I'm going to be supporting it as well. So we have a motion again by Commissioner Hagan, second by Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Motion carried, five to two. Commissioner Cohen and Kemp voted now.
All right, thank you, board members. Bonnie, next item.
Thank you. The next item is Commissioner Myers' item, item F4, regarding a sponsorship for the 2024 National Alumni Association Convention.
Commissioner Myers?
And thank you. This is for the National Association Alumni of Florida NYM University, who hosts their annual convention here in Tampa, May 30th through June 2nd, 2024. We're expecting 600 Rattlers to be here in Tampa with an economic impact of over $300,000. Therefore, I move for approval of this item.
Okay, we got a motion approved by Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. No comments, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item.
Thank you. The next item is the staff report. This is to receive a report regarding all of the areas in unincorporated Hillsborough County where residents are on city of Tampa water. This is item G1, and George Cassidy is here to present the staff report.
Morning, George.
Chairman, good morning, Commissioners. George Cassidy, Public Utilities. We were asked to, let me see if I can get this on. We were asked to review the number of residents in the unincorporated areas that are served by the city of Tampa. And I think it's really important to start from the beginning, which was about 40-plus years ago, actually, the first agreement was approved in June 26, 1979. And as Tampa was growing, as new development was occurring, the county did not have the ability to serve areas immediately outside the city limits. And so we went, Hillsborough County agreed with the city of Tampa to develop, identify an area that they would carve out. We call this the Water and Waste Water Interlocal Service Area. So this is actually, what I'm about to show you is a map that shows, that defines the area, and it's actually legally the city of Tampa service area. If you look in the northwest area, the light blue is the unincorporated area, really the urban service area. You'll see between the yellow, which is the city of Tampa city limits, the boundary of the city limits, and then the in-between, you'll see some blue lines. Those blue lines really represent infrastructure that belongs to the city of Tampa to serve those unincorporated residents with water. We took a deep dive into that area, assessed really how many parcels there were, and we had to do some deductive reasoning and some deductive math. There are about 39,000 parcels, properties in the northwest area defined by the interlocal area, of which about 29,000, we believe, are connected to the city water system. So it's not all of them, but it's most of them. Again, this is the city of Tampa's service area, so any new development within that area, they don't get service from the, from Hillsborough County, they get service from the city of Tampa. I'd like to draw your attention to the south-central area, and you'll see a darker shade of gray, maybe blue. That is the Palm River area, which is currently in the south-central area. We are in the process right now of acquiring the Palm River Service Area from the city of Tampa. As soon as we do that, we're going to begin a program where we're going to be extending water services and wastewater services into that area. But if you combine that area presently with the balance of East Tampa interlocal area, there's a total of 13,000, approximately 13,000 parcels, of which their city of Tampa has about 8,000 properties. So this is just water. If we look at the wastewater side, it's a little bit smaller area. The subset of the interlocal area in the northwest has about 23,000 parcels, of which the city has 5,000 customers. In the south-central area, again, 11,000 parcels, of which there are about 2,500 customers. As I just mentioned, we are extending, we have a program to purchase Palm River, we're going to make that our own. That comes at a pretty hefty price tag, it's $54 million to purchase the infrastructure in that area. That's already programmed into our rates, we have that, and we're going to be bringing that to you, I believe, in the next couple of months for purchase. The interlocal agreement is currently under a two-year extension that is due to expire in June 26 of '25. And when that comes around again, we're going to be working on a program to hopefully look forward and contract the area as we can in time. Again, buying the infrastructure from the city is very expensive, we have to program that in, and it needs to be a logical accession of those areas. We believe that we will ultimately be able to provide a higher level of service to those customers outside the city limits. They're our, they're our residents, they should be our customers. And so we're moving forward with a long-term program to contract that area and bring those customers back into our fold. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and thanks for the report. I know we had a long conversation, so there's a couple motions I like to make besides accepting the report with regards to this. But one of the first things I asked about is the area that is to our west. But one of the first things I asked about is the area that is to our west, the west area, northwest area as it's called. In terms of that, you say we could be prepared, at least as I understood it yesterday, that we could be prepared to totally assume that area in terms of our resources to serve water and wastewater for that area?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioner, in our conversation yesterday, in terms of capacity, we have available water capacity, we have available wastewater capacity, that if it were ours today, we have those resources to support taking those customers in. South Central is another story. We're stressed on our water side, we're stressed on the wastewater side. It would take a little bit more time to be able to develop that capacity to take it over. But we do have capacity in Northwest.
It's an interesting story. I understand how it evolved this way, but to me, it is something we really need to deal with. Because importantly, as this topic came up, the, our county customers that are in these areas are paying a premium for their water and wastewater services, correct?
Yes, ma'am. So the city of Tampa charges a surcharge to any residents that are outside the city limits. And in this particular case, they charge all of these residents 25% surcharge. So I explained yesterday, if your bill was $100 in the city, it would be $125 outside the city limits. And that's available to them through statutory authorization, so they're able to do that. I will mention that there is a bill right now being considered in Tallahassee. It's HB47. HB47 is considering eliminating the 25% surcharge. So that would change the business model considerably, not just for the city of Tampa, but for any municipality that serves customers outside their borders.
And my other question about this is, I know you said it rested on interlocal agreements, and so I said, is this agreement 10 years, 50 years, 100 years? How does this work?
The original agreement was 40 years. It expired in 2019, and we've extended it in one-year increments. And the most recent extension was a two-year extension to '25. So in June of '25, we'll be bringing it back to you in a different form.
So, and I understand the south-central is going to be a problem for a while until we can get more resources to deal with that. But with regards to this, I'd like to, one, does HB47, does that have a Senate companion? That's why I thought we, yeah. And I know that, I'd like to, first off, I'll just say, I'd like to put this on our legislative agenda, because I think it would be important to remove that incentive and to, you know, to hurt, to burden the county customers with that premium added to their bills. And I'm sure it will be a measure type of thing, but I think I would like to add that to our legislative agenda to review and keep track of, but also to support HB47 as we move forward as a county commission and let them know that our, that where we are standing on this.
Second. We got a motion by Commissioner Kemp to put this on our legislative agenda, a second by Commissioner Cohen. Any discussion on this motion? Commissioner Wostel, do you want to speak to this motion?
I just, George, I've been talking to you about this for a year now, basically since I got elected. It was actually the Town and Country Civic Association that brought it to my attention on the campaign trail. I didn't even believe that something like that could happen. It kind of makes sense 40 years ago, but I, we both talked about how it'd be nice if the state just fixed the problem for us, and I'm glad that they have the bill, and hopefully we can support it and get them to cut off that incentive.
Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I'm not speaking directly to the motion, but just to the issue itself. If, say that this bill didn't pass and the 25% surcharge remained, even if we have the capability to take it over, we have to purchase the pipes and the infrastructure from the city in order to do that, correct?
That is correct.
And how much, do we have any idea what the price tag for that would be?
Well, I want to reference the Palm River area, which you can see in, well, the map's been taken down. But the Palm River area was $54 million to buy the infrastructure that exists. The northwest area would be appreciably larger than that.
And it's not, it probably isn't your problem, it's probably our problem to figure out how to pay for that, correct?
Currently, that purchase is not in our rate structure.
Right. So the best thing that could happen, of course, would be for this bill to pass and for our customers to be relieved of the 25%. So I certainly support Commissioner Kemp's motion. But I think if it doesn't pass, the question of whether or not it's economically feasible for us to take over the service, it's going to have to include a question about not just the cost of the infrastructure, but which ratepayers are going to be responsible for paying for it? Is it going to be the whole county? Is it just going to be the people affected? There's some pretty, I think, difficult questions to get through in order to get from A to B. But to the motion itself, I think it's a great motion, and I know some of us will be in Tallahassee next week, and we will definitely see what we can do to help, because that's a very promising development.
And I just want to say, as someone that was personally burdened for 13 years by this surcharge, I wholeheartedly support this. Commissioner Kemp, you want to add anything to the motion, or you want to speak afterward?
I want to speak afterward.
Okay. Please record your vote on the motion. Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Cohen?
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, and I was going right where you were going after this vote, in terms of the infrastructure over there, but I do think it's something we need to look at and figure out for the future, because we do have our interlocal agreements. And if, you know, it may be, I would imagine too, that if the city couldn't charge a premium any longer, that they would no longer maybe agree to the, you know, infrastructure or the whole service deal. I'm just not sure where that would all go, but it is something that is, deserves a bigger look. And because we have the capacity over there, I think we do need to start looking and examining that, so maybe that could be, I guess I would make a motion to have that reviewed as we, we can wait till after this, you know, this session for a report back, but I think, but either way, that also could happen, if it doesn't happen this year, it could happen next year. This is apparently a statewide issue, and there are other jurisdictions that are, that the legislature is looking at. I'm not even sure it was anything predicated on Hillsborough. So I would like to, you know, I guess I can do it here or future items, but that we could bring back something, looking at the northwest area and how we might proceed in terms, since we do have capacity, to assume that we're having these interlocal agreements go year to year. And right now, I guess we have our big bite of Palm River that we're taking for the next five years in terms of that. But I'd like to just continue, I'll ask in future items for us to look at this and bring it back in several months and see what, how we might consider proceeding on that area. But I think it's something that we need to start looking at, how we assume this infrastructure that is county infrastructure, and look at the premium that our Hillsborough County residents are paying with regards to this.
Okay, the other comments, can we just have a motion to receive the report?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Kemp, second. Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Motion carried, seven to zero.
All right, thanks, George. Bonnie, we got one more item, I think?
Well, we do. Future discussion items would usually come next, though.
But we have the consented to an item.
We do.
You want to take that one?
Sure. It's item A7, and this was pulled by Commissioner Kemp to schedule and direct the county attorney's office to advertise a public hearing regarding the Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance.
All right, Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. And the reason I pulled this is, we did pass this in December by a four to three vote, but there is not a presentation even of the, what exists now in terms of the Consolidated Impact Assessment Program ordinance. There was no presentation. I do not know what this ordinance at this time covers, and have had very little information. It was passed with, I think, not really any presentation or understanding, and yet we're having an ordinance come to us that repeals what it is. So in future items, I will be asking, I'll just say it rather than hear, in future items, I will be asking staff at that meeting if we could have a, if a report back to us on our current Consolidated Impact Fee Assessment Program, what exactly it is, what it covers, what have been the budget outlays, and the, you know, the affordable housing provided in the last, I think, my five years, with that five years, so that we can understand the impacts on our budget, as well as the impacts on our affordable housing program. So I will ask staff to do that. I guess I could make my future item now, if that's, if that's all right, or repeat it in just a few minutes. But that's why I pulled it, and I want that paired with the item, so we have more understanding before we take this vote and it's presented to the public.
Okay. Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, well, I'm a little unclear on what that all means, if it's a future item or if we're not, I mean, we have to vote on this today. And this is real straightforward. You know, basically, I think we shouldn't be paying general fund dollars paid out of the taxpayer's pocket and putting them into developers' pockets. I mean, that's really what this is. So I'm not too sure on what is really missing to make this vote. You can take a look at the documents that were part of the backups along with the ordinance and see that we're just striking the section that the Hillsborough County taxpayers are going to be paying developers' fees for them. I've watched these, the prior boards here convincingly state to the public that whenever we're raising impact fees, or impact fees that are not paid by the citizens, it's paid by the development community. However, on this one, we've cherry-picked a certain type of development community that we're going to pay impact fees with the taxpayer's funds. And I know Cameron, you're here, if you wouldn't mind coming up here, too. If you could just do, just a very quick update, we also actually found that there's around $4.6 million, too, of interest that's been collected on this as well for the school fees, correct?
That's correct. So Commissioners, this is just, this is just the impact fee ordinance. The provisions you see in your attachment are just a, one fairly small section of the ordinance, and then a couple of other definitions, and then a minor provision about school impact fees. Going back to, I believe, early, early '90s, the board created a program in the impact fee system that allowed for the county, using county dollars, to pay impact fees for affordable housing projects, for transportation, fire service, and parks impact fees. School impact fees were not included at that time, but what happened then was in 2006, when the board updated school impact fees, the board at that time included a provision in the ordinance that allowed, that it essentially earmarked the interest earned on school impact fees collected for prospective use through a board policy to allow for that interest to be used to pay school impact fees for affordable housing projects. Well, the next step never actually happened. The board never adopted a policy to that effect. So what the ordinance did was it earmarked the interest on school impact fees and has been collecting them now for 17, 18 years into an account, but there's no, that money can't be used without a board policy that allows it to be used. So one of the provisions that's in the attachment that would sort of remove this program from the ordinance would actually delete that provision, that would actually immediately free up that money to be used by the school district for capacity projects under the ordinance.
Yep. And I just think that's important for clarification, but, but again, this, what we're doing is we're just striking a portion that basically states the taxpayers of Hillsborough County have to pay out of the general fund developers' fees. So I am going to move for approval on it. Thanks.
We got a motion to...
Second.
Schedule the public hearing February 7. Commissioner Owen, second. Commissioner Wostel?
I'm sorry. I, I just thought we were, I'm pretty, I'm kind of, did you just say that you found a bank account that's been collecting interest for 30 years?
I didn't find it. No, it's, it's not 30. What happened, so the impact fee program goes back to the 80s. Those ordinances were all merged in the mid-'90s into one ordinance. What happened in '06, the only impact fee that got adopted, that got updated between the 1980s and then 2016, when the mobility fees came around, was schools, and that was in 2006. When the board did that update, there was an action by the board taken at that time to, essentially, it would have been a two-step process. The first step was to earmark the interest earned on school impact fees. The second step was to adopt a policy to allow that interest to be used to pay down school impact fees for affordable housing projects. Only the first step ever happened. There was never ultimately a policy that was adopted to use the interest that was being earmarked. So it is in, it's been sitting in an interest fund since it was adopted in 2006. And like I said, that paragraph that does this, that does that earmarking, is proposed to be deleted by this amendment. What would happen then is that interest would just go back into the general school impact fee fund, which means the school district can use it for capacity projects.
So the bank account's been growing since 2006?
The ordinance change took place in 2006. I believe the first, I believe it actually, the fee at that time increased, it was phased in over two years. And so what it would mean is, at the time the new fee was collected, and I think the first stage of that, I want to say it was October of '06, since that time, the interest on everything that's been collected in school fees has been carved out and put into a separate fund for use under this policy that ultimately was not adopted.
So we found, so someone found a bank account?
Yeah. So I know that you, I know that you want to move on, but obviously, I have, I have a huge issue and it's infinite questions about how this could possibly happen, where there's smoke, there's fire. Has it happened anywhere else? How do we not have something monitoring things like this? I guess it's, I know you want it to be a future chair. Do we need to resolve the $4 million right now? I mean, this sounds like a, it seems like a big deal to me, or do we have to wait and figure that out later? I don't, I don't know. I don't know. It's your item.
If I may.
Sure.
Well, I don't think we can. It's going to be the school board's money, so all we're doing now is dealing with the ordinance. Once we amend the ordinance, those funds will have to, I guess, automatically be released in that way to the school board, or...
Right. So when impact fees are collected, the principal, obviously, until it's expended, earns some amount of interest, but that just gets spent with other impact fee funds. This is the only impact fee that has this feature. By removing the language, it's going to take that provision away. That means the only entity that can spend school impact fee dollars is the district. So they periodically, when there's an eligible capacity project, such as a new school construction, they come and ask for dollars from the impact fee fund. That, as long as it's for eligible projects, they can use the dollars for that purpose. So it's not, this earmarked money is not dollars that county could use for anything else. It's purely school impact fee dollars.
So we don't need to make the other half that was missing you referenced?
No, well...
To go into effect?
No, because there was never a policy that was adopted for affordable housing relief for these funds. So there would have needed, that step had to be taken in order to sort of complete what was apparently the original intent of this provision, but that step never took place. Now, the board could still do that, could implement a policy to that effect without taking that language out, but if the language is taken out, then essentially those dollars can just be used like school impact fee dollars could be.
Okay, I'm going to support your motion.
Bottom line is, we collect the dollars, when the school district has a capital project, they request the money, then it comes on our agenda, and we approve, we approve the request, or we discuss and usually approve the request. Commissioner Cohen?
Well, I feel like that the issue's been totally obfuscated here, that we found this, this pot of money that's some kind of an anomaly, and that that now is justifying why we're doing this, which, that wasn't the original reason that this motion was made. The original motion, which, the original item, which I voted against, had to do with ending the subsidy of impact fees for affordable housing projects. I think reasonable people can agree or disagree whether or not they want the county to have these types of tools in its toolbox to increase the amount of affordable housing. And, you know, the fact that a residual benefit of the vote now turns out to be that we're able to release this newly-found couple of million dollars is fine, but it doesn't, it really, that should... really, that shouldn't have been, it shouldn't have been necessary to take this step in order to find and release those funds. So I don't think it's particularly fair to make this vote now about that. I voted against this originally because I think that it is a reasonable thing for the county to come up with ways to incentivize construction of affordable housing, and boards in the past clearly felt that way. It seems like today the board doesn't feel that way, that's fine, too, but I think that we should call it what it is and not make the vote about something other than what it's about. If, you know, I voted against this the first time, if it had been left on consent, I don't think I would have pulled it, but because it's been pulled, I'm going to vote against it this time as well.
Commissioner Owen?
Yeah, and I'll be real fast, and I didn't mean to make it about that, I just thought it was relevant information for the board to know. This is purely about the unincorporated part of Hillsborough County not paying tax dollars for developers, and that's how I look at this. That was my original motion and my original reasoning for bringing this. We should treat all developers as the same. They're development communities, for-profit companies, and it's my position, we shouldn't be cherry picking them. So, thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Right, and as was stated, another option for that money would be to continue and do what they were intending to do apparently back in 2006, which was use the interest gained from that account for affordable housing to pay those impact fees. So that could always be an option as well, now that we've discovered that. But this was, as Commissioner Cohen, I think, so well put, right here. It's the elimination of these incentives to develop affordable housing, and it includes transportation, fire rescue, park impact fees. And it doesn't even, actually, I'm seeing, it doesn't even list school impact fees here, but I'm sure that that must be part of it. It's not on the agenda item here.
I think, Commissioner, it's because at that present time, the county doesn't pay any dollars toward--
I got it.
--fee relief. And bear in mind, there's a related item, there's also a board policy to this effect that will come back on February 7 as well regarding mobility fees.
And so this makes it clearer than ever to me that we need this presentation that I'll ask for when we get to future items.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Owen, signed, Commissioner Wosel, schedule the public hearing on February 7. Please record your vote.
Motion carried, four to three. Commissioner Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
All right, thank you. Bonnie, we have future issues now?
Yes, sir.
Do you have, Commissioner Kemp, what she said, or does she have to restate it?
I don't think she has to restate it.
Okay, we're good there. Commissioner Kemp, do you have anything?
I have a second future item, and I guess I need to put it on future items, again, with the wastewater and water, to please report back, director of staff to please report back on how we can deal with the north-central water and wastewater, the status of our interlocal agreements on all this, kind of a more comprehensive report on how we might move forward and what that would involve.
Okay, Commissioner Myers?
Mr. Chair, I have two. Our first one is the Bucks versus Detroit. So I'm going to ask the chair, would you make a little friendly bet with the chairman of the county commissions in Detroit? We'll help with cigars or oranges, whatever you want to bring, I suggest.
I'm happy to do that. Again, we usually don't have discussion here, but we'll tell you, years ago, when USF made a bowl, they played Oregon, and let's just say USF lost, and I had to wear Oregon Duck jersey for a board meeting. So, happy to make that wager, though. Second one.
Okay. Then the second one, I'm going to ask the county administration and the county attorney's office to evaluate the possibility of providing water and/or wastewater service to development outside the urban service area, particularly those areas that are densely developed and appear urban, suburban in character. I would like staff to provide options and recommendations for funding and potential benefits connection. The specific areas include the McIntosh and I-4, we have a Burger King, McDonald's, and a RV park there. I'm going to ask if staff can bring this information back to us by March 6, if possible. Okay.
Got that.
That's it. Thank you.
All right. No other items? We're adjourned.